Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Councilmembers Kylie.
Here.
Naitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
And Mayor Tenhaken.
Thank you. We have all council members in order. Today, as we normally do, we're going to start with the invocation. We have Dr. Ron Tullingham from Sioux Empire Baptist Temple. I'd ask you to rise for that, and please stand, stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd have to make a comment to you guys. Thank you. I don't know who supports the veteran, new veteran cemetery out here, but thank you. That's a great addition to Sioux Falls. I'm now an honor guard out there doing cemeteries and also in full uniform. Thank you. I don't know if anybody tells you about that. Our Father, thank you tonight for your blessings to this city, one of the greatest. Bless the City Council. Everybody in all noise agree with everything, and that's the way it should be. But I pray you'd bless them in spite of all of that, that they would have the city at their heart and all the other things involved, that you'd look over it, give them guidance, help them, and all the things they do, that it might glorify you in everything in this great city. Thank you for your praise, for your help. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like Councilors Naitzer and Selberg to go forward. We have another superhero citizen recognition award.
Thank you, Council Chair Sale. Don and Andy Rose, could you please step forward? Tonight, I have the pleasure to present the superhero award. It's our way of recognizing those who do good in our community. Here in Sioux Falls, we're blessed to have a giving business community, and tonight, we're going to recognize one of those businesses. Here to receive our superhero award tonight are Don Rose, owner of Shenanigans, and Andy Rose, general manager of Shenanigans. These two very worthy recipients were nominated by Pastor Erica Varco, and I'm going to read her letter of submission. She wrote, "Shenanigans may be known for their neighborhood sports bar appeal, but their heart, generosity, compassion, and care are what makes them a five-star restaurant. It is evident that Shenanigans places high value in giving back to our community. Evidence is in their small acts and their big gestures. The level of open-mindedness they show their employees is impressive. They hire people with records and disabilities. They treat them like worthy individuals and do whatever it takes to build them up, nurture them, and give them a place to reclaim and be reminded of their identity. This is a place of second chances, a place of hospitality. I've witnessed them going above and beyond for single mothers, young adults who have lost parents, teens that need a place to learn, and people seeking a safe place to rehabilitate. The owners have shared stories about their life as foster parents. They've opened their homes in the same way they opened their restaurant. There have been several fundraisers held inside their business, giving back to the foster community. Their business plays host to many charity events: fundraisers for people battling cancer, Randy's Warriors; battling addiction, Emily's Hope Poker Run; battling life struggles through house fires, sickness, and other things. They've welcomed home our local troops and local sports heroes, and the underdogs, too. Shenanigan supports our local schools and has helped to raise money along with some local city councilors for supplies and supports for Hayward Elementary. They've partnered with other businesses to bring awareness to the incredible mission of Make-A-Wish. Shenanigans has been a generous supporter of Sanford Children's Miracle Network, Sanford Children's Hospital, the Salvation Army, Almost Home K-9 Rescue, and Feeding South Dakota. Their leaders inspire their employees to give back and love one another. Their bar serves up so much more than burgers and beer. Shenanigans has been a proud supporter of Sacred Hoops and their charitable causes. Shenanigans has collected shoes for underprivileged children, and most recently partnered with Samaritan's Feet to distribute new shoes and food to over 800 young students in the Sioux Falls area who truly needed it. Their hearts are big, and the list never ends. Shenanigans, in addition to several other ways they give back to our community, have opened their doors to the table ministry, a new church being planted. Their tables play host to our church and have given people from all over the city, the state, and surrounding communities a safe place to hear the Word of God. We meet around those tables, share the food and fellowship, music and message, and do life together. A pastor walks in a bar. It has been anything but a joke. Don and Andy Rose, their families, and the entire Shenanigan staff have become family. They welcome our church and congregation without judgment and with sincere, authentic hospitality. They go above and beyond helping us live out our mission of meeting people where they are. It is more than a business transaction. It has grown to be a beacon of care in our city. Their willingness to jump on opportunities to partner with us for community service projects demonstrate what it means to be the hands and feet of Jesus. Shenanigans' servant heart help us break down barriers and reach people in a relevant way. They are a gift. Some may see a neighborhood sports bar nestled on the corner of T L S Road. We see a place that has given us a foundation to grow, a space to meet, and the nurturing to bloom while consistently living out what it means to love your neighbor and be a light. Congratulations, Don and Andy. Thank you very much. I'd also just like to say, I've known these two for many years, and they don't do this for the accolades. I think they're probably the last people that want to be standing up here, but they're, but they're very well-deserving. So, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Very well deserved. I'd like to make a note at this time that October 19, 2021 informational meeting and the City Council meetings have been rescheduled to Monday, October 18, 2021. This time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Clerk, can I read the, get the roll?
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That has passed eight to nothing. Now on to our regular agenda. Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
Moved by Kylie, second by Jensen. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That has passed eight to nothing. Before we continue with our regular agenda, I'd like to review public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. Due during the general public input portion of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics that do not involve the agenda items appearing earlier in the agenda as comments have already been made to receive those items. Move on to the next item.
Item 14 is a second reading deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, October 5, 2021, and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located east of South Darrell Place and South Highline Avenue from the C-2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and C-3 Commercial Community Districts to the C-N Conservation and L W Live Work Districts, number 14961, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. These are private applicants, Legacy Development and Consulting Company LLC, Darren Ketchum.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is a rezon by Darren Ketchum, representing Legacy Development. The owner is Dolly Farm Family LLC. It's located north of East 26th Street and west of South Veterans Parkway. It's about 4.39 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future office on the lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? Counsel, any questions for staff? Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Move approval, Jensen.
I have a motion by Jensen, second by Kylie. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That motion's approved, eight to nothing. On to the next item, please.
Item 15 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, correcting the legal description of Annexation Resolution Number 62-21, Annexation Legal Description Correction 14390, 2021, Track 1, McConaughey Edition, sponsor Mayor.
Good evening. Jeffrey Schmidt, representing Planning and Development Services on these items this evening. This annexation was annexed back in June by City Council. It's been approved, and when it got submitted to Minnehaha County, the legal description had McConaughey Edition, everything else on there, but we were missing Track 1. So, this is just a resolution correction.
Thank you. Is there anyone from public who would like to speak on this item? Counsel, is there questions for the staff?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
I have a motion by Selberg, second by Jensen for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have the vote?
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Good. That motion is approved, eight to nothing. On to the next item, please.
Item 16, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 014648, 2021, McGee Edition, private applicants, signature homes.
This is also up in the northwest part of town. The, says, the McGee Edition, it is 135 acres. It's in the Tri Valley School District. They're going to rezone it for residential development. This, you can see, also has some single-family existing homes in the area. I notified all the adjacent property owners, and I received, I think, there's probably 25 that I notified. I received calls about five or six property owners and informed them about the annexation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item? Counselors, questions of staff?
Move approval, Jensen.
Is there a second?
Second, Kylie.
A motion by Jensen, second by Kylie. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That item has passed eight to zero. Move on to the next item, please.
Item 17, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 015094, 2021, Track B, Johnson's Edition, sponsor Mayor.
This is in the southeast part of town. It's 10 acres. It's in the Canton School District. Water Reclamation Public Works is the applicant. They will be doing an institutional use down on this property, and we notified the property owners in the area about the use.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions for staff? Can I get a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Moved by Selberg, second by Jensen to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That motion has passed eight to zero. On to the next item, please.
Item 18, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 013536, 2020, Rocky Ridge Edition, private applicants, Alex Auguste.
This is a 1.5-acre parcel on West 12th Street, just west of Sartoma Avenue. The applicant lives on this property. It's in the Sioux Falls School District. He has requested annexation in the city of Sioux Falls so that he can get public utilities. I've notified the property owners about the annexation.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here wish to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for staff? Want to entertain?
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, second by Jensen to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion has passed eight to zero. On to the next item, please.
Item 19, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 015085, 2021, Track 1 and 2, Lammers Edition, private applicants, Michael Lamer.
This is in the southwest part of town. It's 48 acres of land. It's in the family trust. They have requested annexation so that they can start development on their, on their property. It's in the T School District, and we notified the property owners in the area.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to talk on this item? Counselors, questions for staff?
Move approval, Naitzer.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Naitzer, second by Kylie for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for the roll. Code?
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That motion's approved, eight to nothing. On to the next item, please.
Item 20, a resolution approving the release of an access easement located in Track 1, Sessors Edition, to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, sponsor Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Travis Larson with City Engineering. First, I'd like to start by requesting a motion to amend the exhibit with item 20, with an updated exhibit I received this morning. An error was found on the original. This particular easement release is located just south of Maple, on the west side of Marion Road in the future Jefferson Heights Edition. In order to replat for development, we're getting a new easement in another location, so we can release this one. The easement is no longer needed for the city of Sioux Falls, and we request your support and approval.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Counselors, questions for staff?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
A motion to approve by Kylie, second by Jensen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to amend by replacing Exhibit, Exhibit A dated October 4, 2021, with the new Exhibit A dated October 12, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It just, it's one of those things when we update something the day of the meeting, and it doesn't give the public that 24-hour notice. I know it's an exhibit, and I know it's nothing controversial at this part, but, point, but it's just, it's interesting when, when we try to do this at the last minute, so. And again, because it's an exhibit, it's not as big a deal, but it's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, when was the exhibit updated online?
Well, I received the exhibit this morning.
Okay.
And so, I'm not sure how that process works. I sent it to Tom, so.
Okay.
From there, I'm not unsure. I guess the explanation on it, there was, on the original exhibit, they showed the proposed line work for the development, and the Register of Deeds does not like to show proposed. They like to know as it is currently, and so, we just removed that language out of there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
We have accepted the amendment, passed eight to nothing. Now discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, we'll ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you. That passed eight to nothing. On to the next item, please.
Item 21, a resolution approving the release of a sanitary sewer easement located in Track 2 and Track 5 of Serslick Edition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, sponsor Mayor.
Thank you.
Right. So, this particular easement release is located in the Sherapa Development. There's currently no, no sanitary sewer in there. It's just a remnant that we're getting cleaned up so they can build on their development. All the utility companies have been contacted, and there were no other issues there. Engineering requests your support and approval.
Thank you. Anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, questions?
Move to approve, Naitzer.
Second, Jensen.
Moved by Counselor Naitzer, second by Jensen to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for the vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That motion has passed eight to nothing. On to the next item, please.
Item 22 is a resolution approving the vacation of a 33-foot-wide and 1,271.47-foot-long service road in Split Rock Township, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, private applicants, Split Rock Township.
So, this particular service road is located south of Madison on the east side of Six Mile Road. When, this has already been approved by the township, and because it's in our joint jurisdiction area, we're required to also act on it. So, I don't really have a whole lot of information other than it's no longer needed and has already been approved by the township on September 22, 2021.
Thank you. Anybody from the public here wish to speak on this item? Counselors, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval, Jensen. Second, Kylie.
Motion by Jensen, second by Kylie. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 23, Notice of Transfer of Appropriations on the Memorandum dated September 30, 2021.
Thank you. Counselor, any new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to public input. We are in the general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no longer than three minutes per person. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear on the regular agenda. This time, I'd like to invite members of the public to come forward for general public input.
I want to stress again, we have an election coming up, and this is not a political attack. We got to straighten up that Bishop Dudley. There was a stabbing there, and of course, the victim's not going to want to press charges on the people, so we have a stabbing that happened last night. He knows who it is. And literally, the victims don't come far and want to testify against court. But we have human trafficking out there. We had fights out there. I've witnessed inside of the Bishop Dudley, on the outside of the Giddy community, they were fighting. Nobody stopped them from fighting. They were tailgating out there. Looked like a barroom. Madeline needs to go. The city needs to stop that $120,000 funding from, from the Bishop Dudley until she can get her stuff together. I am working with the diocese to remove her of this property. We need to be proactive and not reactive. I am tired of police in these neighborhoods. I'm tired of going to court for these criminals. I've done, went to court about 30 times on these transits, and I'm sick of them. Madeline needs to go work for Kayla Lynn News. The Bishop Dudley is not Kayla Lynn News. I've done, tried to reach out for her several times, and she cannot keep running for me. We need to get her out and Andy out of there. The city needs to come in and own that shelter if, if we can't run it right. You think that made any kind of sense? All that, that rock, that stuff was happening, and I had to get the police to make all them arrest? I don't care how many. I, I tell the police, I don't care. Shut your mouth and do your job. We're gonna, if we're gonna put 100 transits through the court system, we're gonna put 100 transits through the court system. But Madeline does not need to open up the Bishop Dudley on the outside of private property and let them fight and farnicate and jack off and start pissing and pooping out there. And then going behind handyman to start pooping out there. And saying it's okay to drink on her property and get drunk on her property and start fighting, and nobody calls the police right there. We have a sergeant around that corner. We have officers that live within four to five blocks from here complaining. I've knocked on their doors. We need to stop this. I've talked to, to some of the churches about giving, giving, giving. When you start giving money to these people, you need to know where your money's coming from. Until that Bishop Dudley gets straightened out, we, we need to stop the funding to the Bishop Dudley. I'm serious. Y'all all, all, every single council member, I swear to God, I'm not playing. Every single one of y'all needs to get out of this conference zone and go out there and see what the hell Madeline's doing with the city money. That is crazy. I am sick and tired of getting the police out there and going at it with these criminals. We need to do something proactively. Madeline needs to go, and we need to get somebody there that is proactive and not reactive. And y'all know I have a track record of cleaning up a neighborhood. I go after them like a pit bull. We need to start doing that on this council. We need to stop the $120,000 funding for the Bishop Dudley so she can get her act right.
Anyone else to speak for public input?
Hello, Catherine Riffle here. I'm an advocate for the people downtown as well as for the city. I again bring it to your attention that the Bishop Dudley is definitely hurting people. I have a little thing here I want to read to you from Shields. He says this. "We want people in our facility because we don't want anyone getting hurt. We don't want anybody dying in this bitterly cold weather." Well, that's a bunch of crock. Because they're throwing them out of there and everything else, they're violating the people. The management needs to be cleaned up. I helped to start that Dudley years ago with Bishop Shane. And if you want me to do it, I'll do it. I told you years ago, too, that I got 22 people in a group home with jobs, cars, and everything, apartments, the whole works, in two weeks. If I can do it in two weeks, the city can clean up the Dudley, but you got to get them people out of there. The ones that are running it are hurting hundreds of people. It's no wonder we got fights down there. There's stabbings. I spent a day with the family from the stabbing gentleman last night at 10 o'clock, multiple stab wounds to the head. I'm tired of burying people. I'm tired of finding them under the bridges. That's my job in a way, because nobody else will do it, but I'd like a little help once in a while. So, if you want me to run it, I'll run it. I told you before. You need somebody that knows what they're doing. And these people don't know what they're doing, and they're greedy, they're rude, they're ignorant, they're troublemakers, they're liars, and they're thieves. They're even stealing from the people when donations come in. So, I got proof of, like I say all the time, prove me wrong. Other than that, I think people ought to be held accountable. That's something else. I know we have genocide going on and everything with all this COVID and Biden and China and everything. But you got to remember, we got pilots up there, and I know them personally, and they fly over my house, and they'll wave to me on their side. They'll come in on the side and wave, and I thank God we got some people here, but they're to protect all of us. We need to start protecting our others as well. The churches, don't just stand up and say we're a church. Get together, start protecting our people. That's what we need. But I thank you for being here, and I apologize I haven't been here, but I had taken a nasty fall, and I was off my feet. I was bedridden for two and a half weeks. I just got out there today. I was getting all kinds of phone calls, so I went out, and I've been busy all morning since 9:30 this morning. I've been out there. So, when I go home, I'm going to say a prayer and put it in your hands, and don't be giving them any more funds. It's against the law to give a nonprofit fund from the city. They're, they're by the Catholic Church. Let's go for it. The Secretary to the Bishop physically threatened me. You seen all the FBI agents and all that came in that were backing me. I won't hesitate to call them again, but I'm not going to be threatened on the streets either, and I'm a sharpshooter. So, I'm not going to take it lightly. I take dirty badges. That's what I do. I take dirty badges, that's what I do. If you're in a bad place and you cause any trouble, I'll clean it up. That's what I do. Judges, chiefs of police, it doesn't matter, dirty badges.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anyone else for general public input?
My name is Chad Bishop, I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Our neighbors, our friends, our families, jobs and livelihoods are now being threatened because of what has been termed their vaccine hesitancy. It is no longer just internal policy at a single healthcare provider. It purportedly now has the force of law enacted through regulation by this federal executive. First, a question, in our history as a country, have we ever seen unjust, immoral or unethical policies enforced by law? The August leader on August 10th of this year published an article informing the public that this body had approved a $50,000 study on COVID-19 vaccine hesitancy that will be performed by Augustana University. It goes on to inform us that Dr. Chima believes this study will help to determine why vaccination rates have stalled in the city. I'd like to offer some input into this study. It is possible that the vaccine hesitant remember the early missteps in communication by the unelected bureaucrat, Dr. Fauci, regarding the efficacy of masks at the beginning of the pandemic. Perhaps they remember the change in the guidance last year and the purported reasons. A noble lie is still a lie. Maybe they have even read the most recent updated guidance acknowledging the spread of aerosol, buy aerosol and understand that if it isn't an N95 mask, properly fitted, properly worn, properly cleaned and maintained, the benefit is negligible. Just in this one policy, there have been several changes that have inspired neither credibility nor confidence. Perhaps the vaccine hesitant understand what Stanford's John Ioannidis means when he talks about risk stratification. 10,000 to one, from the 80-year-old obese diabetic to the metabolically healthy 10-year-old. Is it possible that the vaccine hesitant paid attention to the cynical political rhetoric during last year's election cycle? We all sat through an entire political season during the height of the pandemic where politicians, political pundits and talking heads not only questioned the timeline for Operation Warp Speed, but they also questioned the efficacy and the safety of the vaccines being developed under that program. The purported concern was undue political influence upon the approval process. Is it possible that the hesitant listened to this rhetoric, rhetoric that was meant to win an election? Perhaps the vaccine hesitant watched two of the most senior FDA vaccine leaders step down a month ago. Ironically, it is purportedly because of the politicization of the booster shot approval process. The Lancet then published their views. Maybe the hesitant believe they are immune and have COVID-19 recovered person status, either because they had hallmark symptoms, someone in their household confirmed as positive, a positive PCR, a positive antibody or T cell response assay. Even professional athletes like Jonathan Isaac are able to voice both credible and reasonable objections, especially for the COVID-19 recovered persons, to explain their hesitancy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for general public input?
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, I'm Yvonne Oliver. I, I'm calling, I'm speaking in regards to the mandate also. I feel that right now we have a chance for redemption. Today, we are at a crossroad road. We have many decisions to make that would determine our direction. We either choose what would bring life or what would bring death and destruction. God in all his glory and might has set aside those that will follow him and those that will not. Today is that day for that choice. Remember, God doesn't give us a spirit of fear. He gives us a sound mind to make good decisions if we humble ourselves and follow him. We are embarking on a journey that has happened many times before. History is now repeating itself. It first starts with deception, then it divides us, then it destroys everything that does not conform to it. We are either, we either heed the warnings of the past that is glaring at us at this time or we will without a doubt repeat the same mistakes that other nations have made and was destroyed because they would not repent on calling God for a deliverance. Because of our sins and our unwillingness to recognize those sins is what dividing and destroying us now. We have to look deeper inside our hearts and minds and let go and let God take over before we are judged. Because we continue on this path, then we should be ready to reap what we have sown. God is merciful and a loving God. His patience is wearing thin. He is a just God and does not make mistakes. At this present time, we are all here to witness and be held accountable to choices we make or not make. God in his great love, his creation has always given us warnings and a way out. We just have to have the knowledge and understanding of where we are at this time. Many would say that we have been hearing this for many years and even generations, but I say to you today, please do not let your, let, let that harden your hearts and minds to receive this message. We are to open ourselves up to the possibility that we have lost our way and need God's forgiveness. We, we love, he loves us with a jealous love because he doesn't want any of us to perish for us, or for us to cause anyone else to perish. Remember, God has given all human life the ability to choose for themselves and for us to recognize and understand that we are not to take, take or block the choice from anyone else. We also need to remember that we will be held accountable to what we do to the least of those that have no hope. We are not to force our will on anyone. God has given us grace and at this time, he is requiring that we show that grace to others. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
Good evening, Linda Oliver. The, this is the archives to the deadly vaccine, do not get it, vaccine category. And the vaccine is not a vaccine, actually, it's a passagen. And COVID stands for, is not, it doesn't stand for the COVID disease. It stands for certificate of vaccination ID. That means, and it's, it goes with this. It's a crypt, cryptocurrency system for the body. That's what's in the vaccine. So, and it goes along with 5G. So when you guys have voted on 5G to be passed, you voted on it to be a bioweapon for those who've taken the vaccine. So when they turn it on, it's gonna, they're gonna turn it up to, I think it's 60 megahertz or something and people are gonna start falling dead because of that. And this also, this currency system here, it goes with your body movement, the things you eat, the things you say because you have a computer chip in you and they know exactly what you're doing. And that computer chip is connected to your bank accounts.